Good evening everybody, welcome to the meeting of the Shilton Town Council. Can I congratulate you all on your elections to the Town Council. We'll move straight on to item one which I'll announce and that's to elect the town mayor for 2017-2018.
I'd like to applaud Ciarán Quinn, Peter Quinn. He did a good job as we had him last year. He's also a month already. He's been a good ambassador to the town and I hope he can be with everyone in the country.
I'll sign the declaration of office.
You've got an address by the retiring town mayor. Just highlights the various achievements the Shilton Town Council have done over the last year. Again, it's been a very successful year. Like I say, they're all itemized there for you all to be able to have a look. I would just like to add my thanks to councillor Trish Pemberton for all of the excellent work that she's done for the town. And I wish her all the very best in the future. I'd just also like to welcome everybody that's newly elected and those that were in a pause to the Town Council. I'm sure we're all going to work very well together. And, you know, we've got to remember that we're doing this for the townspeople, not for ourselves. So, welcome everybody. Item four on the agenda to elect a deputy town mayor for 2017-2018.
On item three, apart from the retiring mayor, is that on the agenda later or is that... Can we comment on it now at this stage? Well, I feel we're at a stunning regarding the second item down. The localized council tax, this is on the opinion of our retiring town mayor. The localized council tax support scheme continues to impact on the finances of the Town Council, whereby the council is no longer financially independent and is relied upon central government grant support being redistributed to the town. We all know about this. We also know that there was quite a number of parish councils, including ours, who didn't get the seats filled by applications and that's unusual. And if this has happened because people have been disillusioned that we can't be relied of... The central government aren't giving us the vote of confidence that we can be given a direct grant from the government ourselves rather than have to wait for what the county are going to give us. And we know the problems that gives we. We can't draw up our accounts for the following year. We've got to wait and wait and wait till we know what the county are going to give us. To be fair, they are passing some of this money back to us where some authorities are not getting anything. But we never know what it's going to be from one year to the next. This is not helping parish and town councils up and down this country. And I think we ought to be making sure that when we make representations in the following year, to have this turned around and go back to the system where we were giving our grant directly from central government. Otherwise, people are simply not going to show any interest in becoming town or parish council in the future. That is, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make that point. The retiring mayors made it, now I'd like to make it as well. Thank you.
Item four to elect a deputy town mayor for 2017-18. Apologies for absence.
I've received no apologies for absence, Chair.
Declaration of interest. To appoint a leader of the Town Council for 2017-18. To appoint a deputy leader of the Town Council for 2017-18. To appoint members to serve on full committees in 2017-18. It is recommended that all members serve on the full committee of the Town Council. Item ten, to agree the following schedules subcommittee for the Town Council and full committees. Item eleven, to appoint members to serve on the complaints committee for 2017-18. Currently, it's the town mayor and chairman and vice chairman of the full committees. To appoint members to serve on the following subcommittees for 2017-18. Staff and subcommittee, currently the town mayor and deputy town mayor and chairman and vice chairman of full committees. The planning subcommittees, currently chairman and vice chairman of relevant standing committees plus one member from each ward.
Plus also Paul Walton for Sunniger, Dee Anderson for Bayley and Alan Buldworth for...
Item thirteen, to appoint members to serve on the following working parties for 2017-18. Historically, the membership of the working parties has reflected the political balance of the Town Council. However, for 2016-17, no nominations were made by the two independent members or the one Liberal Democrat member. We move on all those, to the formal management, town mayor, deputy mayor.
I can mention them now if you want. Ciaran Quinn, Alan Deacon, Peter Quinn, Jeff Miller, Henry Nicholson.
Allotments. Item fourteen, to appoint representatives of the following outstanding bodies, county council association of local councils, two representatives required. Currently councillors P Quinn and Henry Nicholson.
They remain the same.
Bishop Auckland and Shilton local councils committee, three representatives plus the town clerk required. Currently councillor Patricia Pemberton, Henry Nicholson and Alan Walker.
Add Ciaran Quinn for Trish Pemberton.
And the other two remain. Items. Item C, Jubilee Fails Community Association, one representative required. Currently councillor P Quinn.
Move Peter Quinn.
Item D, Shilton Children and Young Peoples Action Network, the Sky Pan. One representative required, currently councillor Luann Deacon.
Move Samantha Townsend.
Item A, larger local councils forum, two representatives required. Currently councillors Henry Nicholson and Peter Quinn. Item F, Bishop Auckland and Shilton area action partnership, task and finish groups.
Move Daniel Carr.
Chair, I've put this on to the agenda just to encourage councillors who would like to attend any of the task and finish groups, just let me know, they're open to members. So, if you wish to attend, let me know and I'll let the area action partnership know.
I understand Daniel's been appointed in a public rep and so by right he would be on that. So, there might be vacancy for another councillor if so required. Is that okay, Chair?
Item D, Shilton chamber of trade, one representative required.
Matthew Anderson.
Item fifteen, to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Council held on the 10th of April 2017. To read and take as read, approve and adopt or otherwise deal with the minutes of the proceedings of the committee's payee to annex as A, services and amenities, 10th of April 2017. And B, resources, 10th of April 2017. Please report.
Chair, the police has informed us that you were unable to attend the meetings even what has provided the circumstances which members have been told to do. If you have any questions, if you want to either contact the police directly or through the...
Has anybody got anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can I... I'll keep on repeating this and what I carry on repeating is because looking at this, again, the detection rate used to be close to 50% at one time and it's now 33%. Shilton year-to-date detection rate, 33%. Even more disturbing when you turn the page over and you look. Yes, there's been an improvement in some things like burglary, dwelling burglary or theft from motor vehicles. But violent crime, and I know they calculate us in a different way now, but it was up 74% from September 15 to September 16 and now it's still up. When you look, it was 144 in 2014 to 15, it's up to 208 by October. Now, to me, I'd like to know directly from the chief inspector what he puts this down to. Have we had a sudden influx of vangels or whatever you want to call them, criminals coming into the town? Is it lack of manpower? We need to know because this is heading in the wrong direction and we should all be very concerned about it. I mean, there must be a reason for it. All I'm asking is, can we write to the police and ask for their observations as to why this is occurring?
We can as a council request the inspector to come along to the meeting and answer your comments.
Well, I think we are. I mean, we've had the, what's her name, the commissioner here. And we pointed all this out. Now, to me, we've never had any feedback from that as to, you know, I mean, crime figures were bad when he came. So, I think we need to be finding out what's going on here because I don't want to see this slipping any further down than it already is. We've lost a lot of ground on these crime figures over the last couple of years and I want to put a stop to it if we can.
I know the way things have been reported now is very different, that's already been explained. But yes, it would be nice to get the breakdown, Mr Buck, to use that.
I move, we ask for a high-ranking representative of the police to come to answer these questions.
Yeah, I agree with that. Because it is getting a bit out of hand. I know the figures is the way...
We've got to be concerned with that.
We've got to be concerned with the numbers, it's the way they're reporting the crime, you know. I mean, like, the other thing where there was a football match on and I know there was that many police there and they arrested people and all that. Is that concern in violence, you know? Because that was a football match against two rival teams. I think they'd done about, I think it was about 20 odd arrests. But is that included in our numbers, were really... I shouldn't really... Occurred because that was like a football match, but I would agree with you on that.
If we could invite somebody along to the meeting, that would be very good.
I'll ask someone who is available to attend any future meetings.
Item eighteen, Town Council vacant for the thickly ward, Shilton. Co-option to consider the report of the town clerk, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to... A full award seat that was left vacant at the full elections of the council. The seat remains vacant within the thickly ward. And I've itemized within the report the requirements for co-option. The instructions on the town council are requested.
Well, I said to my ward, I think it worked very... A night for the other lad that stood in Bayley ward, actually given the chances, a young lad, I think. Really give him a chance, I think would be only fair. Because, I mean, otherwise, we've just had an election. People had the chance to go and put the names out, the team forward. So, I would propose that we ask the young lad that was unsuccessful to be given the chance to come on. Because I think it's what we need, young people because like us old people aren't going to be here. Sorry Gary, we're getting off, you know. Because as I say, like, I've been with Gary only for more than 20 years now, like, you know, we've been here and done it all. And I think it needs the young ones to come in, like, you know, hopefully we can get the young ones. But I'm sorry about Henry and Alan before you and Benny and Lenny, but we still need young people. Regardless of what body you're from because we're here for the town and nowhere else. We're not interested in what's going on down there. We're here for the town and that's what we want people to support our town.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if I can second it, but I'm prepared to second that. I think, given the situation, the young gentleman was good enough to put his hat in the ring and it was a close call, I remember, but we can't. So, I would support that and wish him well.
Thank you, Gary.
It's a pity we didn't pick one of you for the seat when they say it won't be on the election.
Well, I did try that, it didn't work.
Sorry, I did ask about that and the gentleman up at County Hall said I was too late. I tried.
Just for the record, can we have the name please? David Reynolds, thank you. So, if that's in agreement with everybody, Dave will be able to join as councillor at the next meeting. Item nineteen, for review of standing orders, to approve and adopt the revised standing orders.
Thank you, Chair. We have slightly amended the standing orders for Shilton Town Council. That would normally be reviewed every annual meeting. There's some, very few amendments within standing orders which are based on the national association of local councils model orders. We've simply changed around where it's, we have the power of competence now instead of the power of wellbeing. And there's a few amendments that don't alter what the standing orders stand for. So, that's just a review of the standing orders moving forward with the Town Council.
Can I just raise one point? Just in terms of, just for clarity, this meeting's obviously begun at 6.30. Is it to begin all meetings then at 6pm in future? Sorry, it just says at 2.3?
It says it needs to be amended. Yep, 6.30, we'll amend that to 6.30.
Item twenty, confirmation of general power of competency, to reconfirm the general power of competency.
Yes, Chair, again, after the ordinary elections, we need to reconfirm our power, to be eligible for the general power of competence and to subsequently use that power again. I've given the background within the report about what the powers can be used for, that we now use that power as our first resort. It gives a general outline of the power, some of the restrictions of the power and the criteria of the power for eligibility. I can say that Shilton Town Council satisfies all the conditions of the power where we have the number of councils elected exceeds two thirds of its total number and the clerk of the council holds a certification and local council administration. In order for us to use the power, we have to pass the resolution that's identified at the bottom of the report.
Item twenty-one, explosion of testing group public. Item twenty-two, annual internal audit report to receive and consider the annual intern...
We'll move that, Chair, to the meeting.
Appreciations and congratulations, schedule of narrow engagements attached.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the service of the meeting. Once again, I'd like to say thanks to everybody that's gone on and nice to see some of the old faces back. Sorry Gary. Larry knows what I mean.
I could take item one and that's the appointment of the chair to the service in the meeting for 2017-2018.
Appoint vice chairman, service committee for the year 2017-18.
Seconded.
Right, thank you. Third apology for absence.
No apologies for absence, Chair.
Number four, declaration of interest. Number five, civic hall financial report.
Thank you, Chair. Members have in front of them the civic hall report. It's just for month one, first month of our financial year. And as members can see, it's, we've exceeded, slightly exceeded bar and meets sales to the budget. And so this is just month one of our financial year. Attached are also the graphs for bar income and food income as well.
All right. Item six, civic hall update from the civic hall manager.
Good evening. Yeah, as the town clerks just touched on, last month's trading was quite good. Slowed up on budget and projections, so it's a good start to the year. Going on to my report, it's only a small one tonight. Bar and catering assistant, we've just appointed a new gentleman in that post after our last one Paul Stock left. He's continuing his studies. We've got a gentleman called Kieran Willis. He started last Monday and he's on a 20-hour contract. His duty is basically he'll be taking care of the bar area and advertising for himself and the deputy manager rests in our absence when we have holidays etc. And number two, new equipment update. We are still pursuing costs on furniture and tables etc for the main hall. And we're looking at the ovens and fryers of the kitchen. We are hoping that we can present everything to members on the next meeting with all the costs and the financial sort of drag down. It's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated but obviously if we want to get it right because it's quite substantial sum of money we're going to spend. That concludes my report.
Gary? Can I just, out of curiosity, I noticed on the report, members will be aware that we let out the main hall of the civic to a lot of local people free of charge. It's a public amenity. And we also agreed some years ago, there'll be some people who will be charged for the use, like the dance clubs and stuff like that are charged for the use. Naturally, we don't charge the weddings because we make money. I noticed on the thing that they use the room for the elections. Well, also, the county uses it for, sometimes I understand, for the meetings of the...
AAP.
Exactly. Can I ask, do we charge the county for that service?
Yes, we do, yeah.
We do? And they pay for the use of it for the elections as well?
The two elections we're holding this year, May and June I think it is, they're both charged and the AAP are charged as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Nice to send a letter to Paul because for all his hard work he does, he was a good worker. Right.
Oh, the letters have already been sent, Chair.
Thank you very much. Seven Darren Kerrigan, planning application, here filling in one, test motor one, six months, project for TPO, CC day 27, 12, 12, at one Stephen Court, Shilton, submitted by... All right. County planning decision?
We've got an additional planning item that's coming today. As mentioned previously, and just to update you members, we need to put the planning applications, like this on the table on the evening because there's only a time on when we can answer them. So, that's why we've got an additional one on the table tonight. Members will have the additional planning application in front of them and that's the substitution of house type of two number plots within residential development of plot 82 and 83, development land east of Spout Lane, Shilton, submitted by... As you can see, I think it's a change of house type, so it's two four plus bedroom houses.
Great. Item here, this is standard approval. Item nine, barber support services, termination of licence to...
Thank you, Chair. This is just to update members that barber support services that, right, one of our rooms upstairs in the Town Council offices has given notice to quit their room. They've actually moved out today. The budget for forthcoming year has been prepared on the basis of a full rental income for the room. So, I would recommend that the Town Council note the termination of the licence to occupy of the room and also that we advertise the office accommodation on a licence to occupy of the rental outlined in the report. This will include heat and lighting, including the office along with shared toilet and kitchen facilities.
All right, handle of the finance?
I'll take the item.
Thank you, gentlemen ladies.
I could take item one. Item one is appointment of chair of the resources committee for the musical year 17-18.
Good evening colleagues. Item two, appointment of vice chair, appointment of vice chair for the Shilton committee for the year 2017-2018. We have nominations?
Alan Walker.
Seconded? No further nominations? Thank you. Apologies for absence.
No apologies for absence, Chair.
Item four, declarations of interest. Non indicated. Budgeting control statement, consider the budgeting control statement for April 2017, copy and follow. As the norm for the new and older members shall report ourselves. You get them a week in advance, if you have any questions prior to this meeting, please make sure the clerks are aware of it so we can be written formally. Everybody understand that? There's nothing to stop you bringing it to me tonight. If it's a real contentious issue, please make sure you contact Alan, myself or the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Members have in front of them the budget control statement. Again, this is for the month of April, we're one month into our accounts. As we go on, we will keep profiling the budgets. A lot of our up cost fronts happen in April as well, but you can see that we nearly £14,000 under for the month. But obviously, you know, this will increase as we go on. Just remind members that we do have a training session on the 1st of June with budgets and audits.
Also the training session on the 23rd.
Yes.
It's important that you come along at these training sessions. They're very, very good actually, they're not stupid.
They're not stupid and they're really good and giving insight to the workers of the council. Six, grant here to consider the report from the town clerk, please.
Thank you, Chair. We've got one application for grants here that members have in front of them. And this is from Ellen Road League Club in the amount of £50.
Moving. Ellen Road League Club, £50, thank you. Item selling the account, the examined account, waiting payment accounts paid in advance for the month of April 2017, scheduled to follow. If you've all had the schedule, that's the one that drops a week, let the box a week out. Three days after that. Okay, any questions? No, thank you. I'm just to reaffirm, children's the 23rd of May, 6pm at the town council. Members invited in former session include the role of the councillor, duties and powers and structure responsible for the town council. And the following Thursday, I'm incorrect, 6pm, town council. Members invited in former session include setting and controlling budgets, which is vital, absolutely vital in... We've already discussed early in the night in regard to our budgets and pressure on the budgets. It's important that we have an understanding so we make the correct decision to make sure our public have every opinion that is... Okay? Thank you. We'll see you on the 23rd.